...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for allowing us to gather in these halls to do the business of the city of Atwater. Father, have you on our hearts tonight as the officer that died in Stanislaus County, the deputy, Father, we pray that you'll watch over the family, Father, and also over our officers, Father, and keep them safe, our firemen, and all the residents of this city, Father, that they are sworn to protect. We ask that the business of the city council be done in decency and order, Father, and that we will help to begin healing this country, Father, by this little community starting to heal itself. Thank you, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Here.
Raymond?
Here.
Rivero?
Here.
Vineyard?
Present.
Price?
Here.
We have a quorum. Mayor or city attorney report out from closed session.
Mr. Turfstra.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council and public. Council did meet in closed session prior to the meeting to receive informational updates only. No reportable action was taken.
Subsequent need items. The city has received two requests for subsequent need items requiring immediate action that came to the city's attention after the posting of the agenda. The first one is a request from Girl Scout Troop Number 3048. This item would be considered after the consent calendar. The second item is approval of a joint use agreement with the Atwater Elementary School District. And this would be considered under staff reports.
Mr. Mayor, as to both of these items, the need to take action on these arose after our agenda was posted. In the case of the request from the Girl Scouts, the event will be, we'll need their approval prior to. And with respect to the joint use agreement, the need to take action arose after our agenda was posted because the district has requirements in terms of timing that need to be met. So because of that, both items would need to be added to the agenda on at least a four-fifths vote.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any other comments or additions? If not, call for the question.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Rivero?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
The motion passes. Approval of agenda as posted or as amended.
Are there any items on the agenda to which the council members would like to add, delete? Hearing none? Entertain a motion?
So moved. Second.
Call for the question.
Raymond?
Yes.
Rivero?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
The motion passes. Presentations. Monthly verbal report by Merced County District Three Supervisor McDaniel.
Supervisor McDaniel, good evening.
Mayor, council, thank you very much. I think we can talk about maybe a little bit of elections that just happened last week. I think we were over consumed in the media and advertising and everything else. One thing that I was looking at today, we have just under 100,000 registered voters in Merced County. Our population's about 270,000. So we're a little low on our registration effort, but if you look at the return on the ballots, so our return ballots as of the day of the election was 44,000. So that's over 44 percent. We don't get 44 percent in a regular election at any time. We're always pushing to be around 40 percent, and it's usually around 39 percent. And on an off presidential, it's even lower than that. So this is very good. Barbara Levy, who is ahead of our Elections Department, actually has over 22,000 ballots still that need to be counted with whatever came in on Saturday and Monday because of the new state law. So as postmarked, you have three days for your ballots to get returned. Plus, if anybody turned in any vote-by-mail ballots that didn't have a signature on, they still, today was the deadline for them to turn, to show up to sign their ballot. And our Elections Department actually reached out to those folks to let them know if they had ballots that did not have signatures on them. So whatever came in today and Saturday, we're looking at a 65 percent return on our election here in Merced County. I think that's good enough to give ourselves a hand because that's huge.
Yeah.
So for us elected, the ones who participate in this, there's a lot of people paying attention. It's good for us to realize that. Also, I'd like to move on to the mobile district office hours. I am not going to have them this month or December just because they fall in the weeks of the holidays and it's just too hard to try to schedule it and to try, and if we change the schedule, it'll confuse a lot of the people who attend those. But I'd like to get back on board on, starting January, and do it at the same time. Do it the fourth Thursday from 1:30 to, 1:30 to 3:30. Open up for two hours here. I've already heard back from Congressman Costa's office, they want to participate. Senator Anthony Canelo's office wants to participate, as well as Assemblymember Adam Gray. They found that this has been very productive, and we try to make ourselves as accessible as possible to the public, and that's what we continue to do. I think that's all I have for you on this one. I did attend a LAPCO training. I think there's some folks in here that were interested in what LAPCO does. I'm right up to speed. It's the first time I've ever been to a conference was every class that I attended was a policy-driven, policy-want class. It was fantastic. So all you see is the inside of a building, so that's about it. But I think I learned more at this class than I've ever learned at any other class. So if there's any questions from the council or from you, Mr. Mayor?
Any questions or comments to Supervisor McDaniel from the council? Mr. Rivero?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question. The new development that you're planning at the county about where things may be, now I've seen in the newspaper, and I don't have the time right now because my job to go down there during your meetings, but, and I know a lot of the public doesn't, can you bring back some of the plans so you could share it maybe on our television for those that watch, actually from Atwater, they could maybe see it?
No, which plans? For the Ferrari Ranch, Atwater-Merced Expressway?
No, not those. The one that what you're planning on doing with the base.
With the base, good.
Yeah, the base plans.
Right. And so there's one big plan that we're looking at, there's a smaller plan depending on Measure V. Measure V right now is at 69.14 percent. So the way we look at it now is pass, but we still have 30 percent of the votes to count, and it'll depend on how Measure V passes and which plan we're going to go with. But yeah, what I'll do is invite our Planning Department out here, and we'll do the full-blown presentation here.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Larry, did you have? Did you? Okay. Next one.
Comments from the public. At this time, any person may comment on any item which is not on the agenda. Please state your name and address for the record. Action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. To comment on an item that is on the agenda, please wait until the item is read for consideration. Please omit comments to a maximum of five minutes.
Okay, this is your chance. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council? Mrs. Dash.
Good evening. Linda Dash, Atwater. Couple months ago, I brought to the attention of the council one little provision in your ordinance. I just want to remind you again this evening, 2.08.180, something that I think will be very important after this election, and you'll have two council members on there that possibly are new. City Clerk could bring maybe the entire council up to snuff on administrative policies in regards to council versus employees, not directly getting involved with hiring of employees. It would be the responsibility of the city manager only since one of these days we'll have a new city manager. So I just kind of left this for some of you. You probably already know, I know the mayor is aware of it, and some of the older council members, but that might be a good idea just to keep yourselves out of a little bit of trouble so that way when there is an opening, that it's up to the city manager's discretion to hire city employees except for the city manager. That's it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Mr. Reed.
Adam Reed, 1520 Fruitland Avenue. At the last meeting, we talked a little bit about the Manuel Barrios Park, but I also have, I want to start maybe looking into, I want to keep bringing it to your guys' attention that the general plan has some policies in it that we haven't really strived to meet as far as open space and park requirements. So I just would like to ask that maybe the new council and the present council takes a look at some of those policies. We're under, we set a policy to get three acres per 1,000 residents, and we're below that. Right now, we're at about 2.59 acres, or yeah, acres per thousand, so we're a little bit below that. And we really haven't had any growth in our parks and open space since early, you know, mid-2000s, whenever we did the park over in Claremont Reserve and the one next to the fire station on Buick. Also, too, something else I'd like to bring to the attention, maybe the council, because I haven't really been able to get any clarification on it, but over on Juniper and, Juniper and Wenton Way, there's a subdivision right there on the corner. It's a newer subdivision across from St. Anthony's, it's called Sandalwood Square. Back in 94, I think the map and conditions were approved for that subdivision, and there's a basin there that goes between the subdivision. There's a knuckle in the subdivision, it's, I don't have the name of it, but the street in the subdivision and Wenton Way, there's a basin there, and that was actually dedicated as a park and open space along with a basin. And it's on the city's, in the general plan, it's on the city's list of parks and also on the city's website, the map with the parks, it shows Sandalwood Park. So that's supposed to be, you know, free and open access to the public, and obviously right now it's fenced off. So I'd like to maybe look into that. There are some conditions on there. There's supposed to be a bike path that ran through the subdivision and some other things. So these are things, you know, in our Planning Commission meetings and stuff, sometimes I get a little bit of pushback, it seems like, that maybe I'm going a little bit too far with some of the conditions and things that I'm asking about. But this is kind of case in point why I asked for these things, because we conditioned this, it was never done. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Scott, did you get that?
Oh, Scott.
Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council at this time?
You got that microphone ready for me up there? Thank you. Last Thursday, we Marines celebrated our 241st birthday at the VFW. For those of you that were there, I'm sure you had a great meal we had, tri-tip, and a great time. I'm here tonight to present to two people that's helped me, not only with the Marine Corps birthday, but many other capacities, and I'd like to have our mayor, Jim Price, come down here, and also our city manager, Frank Petro.
Can we stand here?
No. Basically, both of these certificates, we Marines like to show our appreciation when we have people like these two gentlemen help us out. Basically, it says yours sponsorship in Marine Corps 241st birthday. Thank you for that. California Marines, we take great pleasure in presenting these certificates of appreciation and a congratulation on a job well done on supporting our veterans and the community. Given this 10th day of November, 2017, Sergeant Larry R. Lee, USMC, Vice Commander of the Marines here in Atwater. So I'd like to present both of you your certificates. And thank you, thank you, thank you. Don't go away. You'll find out. In fact, I just got these two today. Can you hear me without this?
Yes.
Anyway, new, got Marine Corps emblem on it.
Nice.
You want to wrap it up, you can wrap it up. And then there's yours, Frank. Wait a minute. This is only our second year, we're still learning how to do this. Okay, I got to do that. Two little pins for each one of you, gentlemen. Says, did I say Marine Corps? Separate Fidelis? And it says 241 years.
Thank you, we got that. Thank you.
Well, that's quite a surprise. What Larry was referring, those that don't know, these are what is referred to as challenge coins, and this is quite an honor when you get this from units, you know, within the military and what have you. And so, thank you, Larry. This is quite the honor. Is there anyone else wishing to address the city council? Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent calendar. Background information has been provided on all matters listed under the consent calendar, and these items are considered to be routine. All items under the consent calendar are normally approved by one motion. If discussion is requested on any item, that item will be removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Are there any items on the consent calendar that any members wish to remove for separate Are there any items on the consent calendar for any member of the audience?
Good evening. My name is Debbie Musias. I'm the business agent with AFSMI, the labor union, representing the mid-management bargaining unit. Item number five, we, I was, I apologize, Gina, for the confusion because I understood it would be on the calendar, but then further information was provided to the bargaining unit members that we will have further discussion with city manager for clarification and justification to address some of our concerns. So we'd like, I don't know if we want to do that now, but we have a meeting on Thursday, so we wanted to pull it.
Yeah, we're pulling it from the agenda tonight, and we'll meet on Thursday at 9:30, correct?
Thank you, sir. Yes.
Okay. Okay, so make a motion then that item number five of the consent calendar be removed for, from this consent calendar and placed on the December agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for question.
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Rivero?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Are there any other items on the consent calendar that would like to be removed for separate consideration? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve as amended.
Second.
Call for the question.
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Rivero?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
The motion passes. Funding and budget matters. Treasures, oh, I'm sorry, we have to go back to petitions. Request from Atwater Girl Scout Troop Number 3048.
Is there a representative here for the Girl Scout troop? I think there is.
My name is Josella Rosas, and this is Gabriela Lucas. We will both be speaking to you this evening. We are Troop 3048. We, as a troop, believe we should be involved in our community as much as possible. As you know, in this time of year, there are a lot of families that are in need. We have been given the opportunity to distribute food to families with the help of the Merced Food Bank. We will be distributing food with your permission at Heller Park. We have come here today to ask permission so our community action projects for this month can be a success. Thank you.
Good evening. As the holiday season quickly approaches, many of us look forward to spending time with our families. However, this is also a time to not only give thanks for all the wonderful things we have, but to share with others as well. Girl Scout Troop 3048 would like to hand out canned foods for those less fortunate to ensure that they will be able to have a nice meal as well this Thanksgiving. We realize how fortunate we are, and we would like to be able to help those in need in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, girls. Motion to approve the request by the Girl Scouts Troop 3048?
Second.
Is there anyone that has any other further questions for these young ladies?
Do you need any help?
You got plenty of help out there? Okay. Call for the question.
Bergman?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Rivero?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Good luck, girls.
Funding and budget matters. Treasures report for the month of October 2016.
Good evening, mayor and councilman. Before you is the Treasury report for October.
Are there any, any comments for Mr. Heller? Questions concerning the Treasurers' report? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any other comments? Call for the question.
Rivero?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
The motion passes.
I have one question. Can we have the Audit and Finance Committee meeting at 4 o'clock instead of 3:30?
Well, Mr. Vineyard, you're...
I don't have any problem with it. We discussed it in the Audit and Finance Committee, just a matter of whether it's written a certain way as far as the time.
You have to change it by resolution.
Yeah, yeah, by resolution, we can take that under consideration for sure. Thank you. You got off easy tonight, Mr. Heller.
Reports and presentations from staff. A resolution approving a joint use agreement with the Atwater Elementary School District.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, at a previous meeting, you've approved the purchase and sale agreement with the district pertaining to the Manuel Barrios Park. Staff subsequently met with district staff to discuss the prospect of a joint use agreement under which the city of Atwater and its residents would enjoy the use of that facility after the district has acquired and improved it under this joint use agreement. And so we're asking council to approve Resolution Number 2929 to approve the joint use agreement with the Atwater School District. I'm not sure if the district has anybody here that would want to speak and lend any support to this, but if not, we would submit it for council approval as drafted.
Okay. Are there any members from the school district here to speak to this particular item? Okay, seeing none, what's the council's pleasure? Mr. Raymond?
I just have a question for Legal, real quick, to address Commissioner Reed's concern. With this joint use agreement, this still counts as part of our open airspace for the general plan, correct?
Yeah, what this does is it allows for dedicated use by the district during school hours and during school functions, but then other times it would be, continue to be available to the community. And so under that joint use agreement, we would find that there would not be a significant reduction in its park usage, and particularly because the district plans to make a number of improvements to that facility, so it actually enhances recreational opportunities.
Any other questions for this particular item? Mr. Rivero?
Oh, I think Mr. Vineyard.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Vineyard. I'm looking over the top of my laptop here.
No problem. Just for the, the public's information, the joint agreement would be 40 years, is that correct?
Right. In talking with districts, the district's council, the longest that the education code, as I understand it from her, would allow this use to go on without having to be renewed, it would be 40 years. It can be renewed at that point. Hopefully, all of us will be doing something else by then, but at least I hope I am. So yeah, 40 years and obviously a renewal period.
Thank you. And also, we had made discussion earlier about traffic control. Is there any provisions within this agreement for...
Well, there is a requirement that the district make the parking area available to the public during that time when there is public use of the facilities. Now, traffic control, in particular, I think you'd probably have taken up with staff.
Okay, all right, yeah, because we had discussed about out at Shaver Road, so, okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, entertain a motion.
Oh, I think somebody wants to speak on that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If the public wants to speak, yeah, absolutely.
Adam Reed, 1520 Fruitland. I'm not sure if it, I don't believe that the agreement would be allowed to be used towards our open space requirement, but I'm hoping, obviously, the attorneys looked into it, all look into it. But at the last board meeting, I was at the last school board meeting, and they were talking about their safety plan. Their safety committee came out, and they said they're going to be doing an audit of their safety plans, and the consensus, basically, of what I heard from them was that they were going to be looking at access points and fencing, and it seemed as if they were going to be tightening up their security policy. So I haven't had a chance to talk to Ms. Shaver yet, but I was going to ask her how that was going to affect this, because if they're talking about tightening up their security policies, which I think the school should have a very tight security policy, my son attends school here in Atwater, and I would appreciate that if it did, but I just don't know how, is somebody going to be there to unlock the gates after school? Who's going to lock them at night? Are they going to follow the same hours? Are they going to follow the same hours City Parks do? You know, I just don't know how it's going to work, work, work together. I mean, they're, they're working on it now, they don't have it in place yet, they've got a consultant working on it from my understanding, but hopefully, that's taken into consideration. But I, I just don't think that we'd be able to count, I mean, so we're going to count all City Parks or all City, or all schools' open space as City Parks now? We're going to take that into our general plan? I don't, I don't think I've ever seen that in a general plan where we, where they've met policies by using schools, but I, I, I'm only familiar with the cities that I work in, so maybe, maybe there is.
With respect to your security concerns, have you, you have addressed that to...
No, I haven't, I haven't talked to Ms. Schaefer yet. They, they were, they're going through the process of doing, putting together a safety plan and doing an audit on it, is what they, they talked about the last meeting, and one of their points was that they were going to look at access and how many access points they have and security and stuff like that, so.
Okay, well, with respect to the open policy, do you have any comments on that, Mr. Chirp?
Well, in the resolution, we're just making the finding that because of the improvements that the district is making to the facility and because of the continued use, availability of use by the public, that there's not a net reduction in recreational opportunities. Now, you know, in interpreting and applying your own general plan policies, there is considerable leeway on the part of the council, and certainly in an instance like this where you are selling the, the title to the property but retaining its use for a minimum of forty years, we felt at a staff level that that was consistent with your general plan and its policies. And reasonable minds can differ on that, I understand that, and there, you know, there's certainly an argument that can be made that, you know, unless you retain a hundred percent of the usage of the facility, it's a reduction, but I don't believe in, on balance, that that is a supportable conclusion. I think under the facts of this case, the enhanced recreational opportunities that you have would, would lend support to consistency with your general plan, so that's the reason for the recommendation in the resolution.
Adam, is your, one of your concerns that this may in some way be precedent-setting for the others?
Well, I don't want to see the loss of recreational space for the city. I mean, we've, you know, we're, we're all citizens here in the city, we pay tax money. That park, like Manuel Barrios Park specifically, was dedicated with a map. Developers generally don't just give property away, they're forced to by conditions, not that they're unwilling to give it away, but they don't just usually go in and give away property. And my understanding is Lou Steiner dedicated that because he had, you know, it was a condition of his map, and it was dedicated on the map. It says it's given for dedication on the, on the map. So, that's the benefit of the citizens of Atwater, you know, that's, that's my only concern. I'm, we, we haven't built any parks. I live over on Fruitland, west of Schaefer and north of Bellevue, there's no parks, we have zero parks. So, you know, I, I can't, I can't walk to a park with my son and not have to cross a major street. You know, Manuel Barrios Park's about a mile, the City Park here, which doesn't have any play equipment for kids, you know, is about three quarters of a mile. The one on Lynn and Walters Park is about a mile for me, you know, so we have to drive. So, I mean, I, I want to see us building parks, and hopefully, this, if, if this does take into account and we add all these school sites to our general plan, hopefully, we're still going to plan on building parks, because obviously, if we take all this open space in that the school is willing to give us a forty-year agreement on, we're going to be, we're going to exceed our policy on it. So, hopefully, that doesn't negate us building parks, so.
Okay.
That's all.
Thanks. Mr. Rivero?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think one of the things the councils need to do, the one that's coming in, and the future councils, is really when you're talking about planting parks, it's not like what happened over there, where the most worthless piece of ground was a little corner by the railroad tracks, which basically punched, pinched it in, and then the rest of it underneath the power lines. You, you need to have something that's all congruent altogether in the future, not just go with the developer ones, but what's best for the citizens of Atwater. So, I mean, there, that's one of the cases right there, where there's, there's land that was donated, but it's basically worthless. There's, I mean, they call that power line park, please, there's nothing that happens there. So, I mean, the councils in the future have to really take a look at that and make sure that they're getting what they need to. When developers want to come in, hey, you want to be part of the community? Sure, great. And, and that, that was a good point you made, rather parks, so, thank you.
Okay. Is there any other comments from the public or from the council to this matter? Action, Adam?
There is no motion.
So, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Twenty Nine Twenty Nine Dash Sixteen.
Second. Motion and second. Any further discussion? Call for the question.
Rivero?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
The motion passes. Verbal Report Regarding Five-Year Forecast for General Fund, Measure H Fund, Gas Tax Fund, and Community Facilities District Fund.
Mr. Zanoni, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening to you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Bill Zanoni with Municipal Resource Group. The item that we have before you this evening is a review of a five-year financial forecast. As you'll recall, last spring, I guess May and June, during your review of the fiscal year two thousand sixteen seventeen budget, we talked about several of the significant financial challenges that the district was, would be facing over the next several years. And so, to, to follow through on that discussion, Laquinder Deol has done a very good job of putting together a five-year financial forecast. She and I have gone through this in, in fairly detail, and so, what we want to present to you this evening is a summary of that information. Again, this is pretty consistent with what we have discussed previously, but what we've done is looked at where the city is today, and based on some of what we feel are realistic assumptions, where we will be over the, the next five-year period. So, we're starting with the general fund for our key assumptions for revenue. We are, we've assumed that the city will continue to see a slight increase each year in assess valuation and property tax revenue. That was one of the areas that was significantly impacted during the economic slowdown several years ago, that we feel, and what we've been talking to the, the county, that three percent a year is a realistic figure going forward. Sales tax, we've worked with the city's sales tax consultant and are projecting a one to two percent increase each year for the next five years in sales tax. An ongoing increase in building activity in the city, and a, a new item that's in the budget this year that hopefully will continue on is revenue, general fund revenue from the, the new tow yard. We've got, I think, a hundred thousand in this year's budget, and we're assuming five hundred thousand dollars a year, starting next fiscal year and going forward for the remainder of the, the period. For expenditures, we've taken a, a very conservative estimate on expenditures for the, for the next several years. The information that you have before you this evening assumes no additional staffing in the city or in the general fund, no salary adjustments for existing staff other than just normal step increases, so we have not added in any cost of living adjustments. What we have included in the calculations is an elimination of the furlough, so that we would have all employees on, back on five days in, in these assumptions, reallocation of a position that's currently funded in an enterprise fund, and, and based on the work that's being done, should, should be accounted for in the general fund. And then with the COPS grant, as you'll recall, when the city receives COPS grant funding, that, that funding is for a three-year period. At the end of that three-year period, those positions must be retained for at least one year with additional funding. So, we've assumed that one position in this year's budget is being transitioned from the COPS grant into the general fund, one additional position in eighteen nineteen will go back into the general fund, and one officer in eighteen nineteen, for purposes of this assumption, would, would go into Measure H year after next. So, those are some of the key assumptions, and then plugging those in, there's a lot of numbers up there, and it's, it's kind of hard to read, but I think if you could focus on the operating surplus or shortfall line, what, what this indicates is that this year and for each of the next five years, we're anticipating a, a balanced general fund budget, and that means that the operating revenues would, would be enough to cover operating expenditures, although you can see that the, the operating surplus each year drops. So, right now, just preliminarily for next year, we've got an operating surplus of about five hundred thousand dollars, and that's just based on these assumptions. I understand you haven't seen, we don't have a budget yet for next year, but given that set of assumptions that we just went through, and that surplus would drop from five hundred thousand a year down to fifty-five thousand by the end of the, end of the, the five-year period. And what that does to our, our deficit, our fund deficit, which at the end of last year was two point eight million dollars, assuming that those revenues and expenditures came in at that level, our operating, or our deficit would be reduced down to one point three million dollars. This just shows basically the same information on a chart. The two lines up on top, the, the red line is expenditures, the blue line is revenues, and you can see those lines become very, very close. The green line is our fund balance, and you can see our negative fund balance is, is coming up closer to the zero line, it doesn't get there. But again, I think, if you remember, this past year, we talked about what a target fund balance should be, and for the general fund, the, the minimum balance that we should have is fifteen percent of our operating revenues. So, we should have, rather than a negative fund balance, we should have in the general fund at least about two million dollars. So, that's our goal, is over time, to get that green line up over zero and up closer to that kind of pink dotted line, somewhere in, around two million dollars, and ideally at some point higher than that, but at a minimum of two million dollars. So, the general fund, standing on its own right now, we're anticipating that expenditures are increasing at a greater rate than revenues, and you can see that because our, our annual operating surplus is, is dropping. The surplus does decline over a five-year period, but the general fund deficit slowly is coming up, so it's going from two point eight to one point three million, which is what we want it to do, and we knew it was going to take time. But just looking at the general fund, given these assumptions, if these were all right on, we would see the general fund slowly moving where we wanted it to go. So, that's the general fund. Measure H. Measure H, which was approved by the voters, generates sales tax revenue to be used for public safety costs, and our forecast for Measure H revenue is that the revenue from the, the sales tax surcharge will increase at about the same level as, as the city's general fund sales tax revenue will increase. So, it will go from about one point seven million dollars this year up to about two point one million dollars over the next five-year period. Whoop, maybe go back one more, Laquinder. There we go. But a key line to focus on on this chart is the operating surplus or deficit line, and in fifteen sixteen, and in current year budget and looking forward, we're anticipating that our Measure H revenues are going to exceed our, our expenditures will exceed our, our revenues. So, what that means is each year, we will draw down on the current fund balance in Measure H. So, right now, there, beginning of this year, there was about six hundred thousand dollars in the Measure H bank account, and, and those dollars will be used and drawn down over the next five years, so that by the time Measure H's ten-year period sunsets, Measure H will be in a deficit of about eighty thousand dollars. The other item that's key to note is included in this Measure H budget is two point one million dollars, or by twenty-one twenty-two, included in the Measure H budget is two point one million dollars of public safety expenditure costs. So, something to keep in mind and that will have to be discussed is if Measure H is not renewed or extended, then there's, not only is there an eighty thousand dollar deficit, but the following year, there will be two point one million dollars of public safety costs that will have to be funded somehow or eliminated, and clearly, the general fund is, is not anticipated to be in a position to, to assume that additional burden. There we go. So, this is just that same information on chart and a, and a graph, and the, you can see the red line and the blue line kind of are together, there's no gap there, and, and our, we're basically drawing down, and assuming we're going to draw down our Measure H fund balance over the next five years. Okay, I think we've covered, covered that one. Third piece of good news is gas tax fund. The city receives gas tax funds from the state of California. The state, for all, for all agencies, has been reducing the amount of gas tax funds. The gas tax formula has been reduced, and as gas prices drop, that revenue comes down. So, we're looking at a significant reduction going forward in gas tax revenue, dropping from one point two million dollars next year down to about eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars over the next five years. Currently, we fund six positions in the gas tax fund, and gas tax funds can only be used for street, street maintenance and improvements. This is a much, much more urgent need that'll have to be discussed during the upcoming budget process. Our gas tax ending balance as the end of last year was just a little bit over a million This year, we're, we've budgeted a, a shortfall of six hundred thousand dollars, and so, right now, we're, we're anticipating we're going to end this fiscal year with about four hundred thousand dollars in the gas tax fund, which means going into next fiscal year, which is a budget that you'll be considering about six months from now, the gas tax fund will be out of, out of cash. And, and you can see that if we don't make some changes to those, to that budget, that the, the deficit continues to grow to, to a point of about two point one million dollars by the end of the, end of the five-year period. And this just shows the same thing. The main, the main line here to look at is that green line, where it dips down below zero in a year, and then it continues to, to drop. And again, this assumes that no action is taken, and we just continue our current operating plan for gas tax. So, we do have a shortfall in each of the five years, reserves are depleted next year, and again, the question will be, what do we do at the end of this five-year period? Or actually, at the end of next year, what do we do with those costs? Where do they, where do they fall? Last fund that we wanted to just touch on briefly is the Community Facilities District Fund. This is a fund that's funded with assessments, and it, the purpose of the fund is to prevent or eliminate criminal gang activity in the city. We currently have two officers that are funded with the, the CFD fund. That, that fund has a, a deficit right now, as of the end of last year, was about two hundred and ninety-six thousand. That fund has a deficit right now, as of the end of last year, was about $296,000. Last year, we budgeted those officers in the Measure H fund. But the Measure H fund doesn't have the ability to continue to support those officers, so that's why you can see in 1516, there were no expenditures. We used those dollars last year to help reduce the shortfall. This year, those officers are moved back into the CFD fund. So if we continue to fund two officers in this fund, the deficit of about, a little bit under $300,000 continues. And right now, we have not identified a way to eliminate that shortfall. So the last thing that we did is we said, with the gas tax fund, with the Measure H fund, if those costs, if we don't do anything, those costs would fall back onto the general fund. Gas tax fund cannot be negative. We're not allowed to do that. Actually, the auditors won't allow any fund to be negative and the state won't allow the gas tax fund to be negative. So we said, what if we don't do anything and just add these costs into the general fund, which is already negative, what would that look like? And what you can see on the bottom line is that our general fund shortfall, instead of starting to come back up, goes the wrong direction. So our shortfall right now, which is about $2.6 million, our deficit will, would grow back to about $3.7 million or increased by about $2.3 million over the next five years and put us right back where we were several years ago. Again, that's the green line where you can, that green line is, we want it to go up and get it up to the, to the pink line up there. And by the end of five years, we would have about a $6 million gap from where it is to where it should be. So the reason we wanted to have this discussion with you tonight was just to start the discussion. This is consistent with what we talked about last May or June. This is really nothing different than what we talked about when you were looking at the budget. The difference is we've taken the numbers and run them out to see if anything short of something drastically positive or negative happening in the city, what it would look like. So what we're showing is the general fund is slowly recovering, but that the general fund cannot support the shortfalls in these other funds. And so as we talked about last year during the budget and with the timing right now, we will be in January, February, Laquinder will be starting, working with the departments to prepare next year's budget. Some type of action plan needs to be developed to address these anticipated fund shortfalls. So this is information that we reviewed this afternoon with the city manager and department heads. Finance committee reviewed this at their meeting this afternoon also. And hopefully, what we wanted to do was just start a discussion and hopefully, the council will schedule some type of workshop to start talking about where you see the city heading and how we're going to get to where you want it to go. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the council for Mr. Zanoni? There was a COPS grant that was submitted a couple of months ago, I want to say. Did we ever get, because one of the things that I was curious on with that one was, I believe it was going in to address retention and I didn't know whether or not that came back as approval or not. Laquinder, do you?
I think, did you get a response from them, Frank, or no?
We weren't approved at this point in time. They'll be doing another review within, Laurie, correct me if I'm wrong, a few months.
Right. Because one of the requirements to get their retention was if our fund balance is going down versus coming up, and which was not the case, good thing. The other thing was they were looking at the bond rating. If your bond rating has improved, then of course, you will not qualify for that retention grant. So that could be the reasoning that we didn't get at that.
So we got dinged for being better?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And I think, again, the thing to remember with the COPS grant, while they're great, but they fund three years and we have to be able to, at the end of three years, somehow be able to show that we can fund those positions after the end of the three-year period.
Well, it would be my suggestion, in any case, we're going to seat a new council here in December and at that time, possibly do as was suggested and have some type of a workshop discussion in January and see what we can do and maybe put our heads together collectively over the holidays and try to get some creativity together on just exactly what we're doing because as Mr. Zanoni did his briefing here, I was thinking, gee, how much more cheerier can this get? This is, so that would be my suggestion at any case. I'll leave it open to anybody on the council if you have any other ideas or suggestions. Mr. Rivera?
Yeah, I think that was an excellent suggestion. When we have the two new council members come up, I think they may be a little more open to some good ideas that have been battered around in the past. And so I like to see us move in that kind of direction, start saving that money. We could have been saving money for years and I hope they come in with that kind of positive attitude. So to discuss issues.
In that case, I'll put it in the form of a motion then that, well, no, I don't think so. We'll just, we'll bring it back in December and see, decide some dates for workshops or a workshop in the early part of 2017. And for right now, just digest these numbers and where we can go and talk to staff and see where there's some kind of flexibility here or some kind of revenue generation possible. So, okay. Anybody have anything else? Okay. Thanks, Dan.
Verbal report regarding vacant building and underutilized site sales tax rebate program.
Good evening, mayor councilmembers. Happy to be here tonight to discuss this program. As you know, this is something that you took some proactive leadership on to enact. And unfortunately, we haven't had quite the, you know, the people signing up for it hasn't been as overwhelming as we had hoped. And so with that in mind, I've had some input from some of the councilmembers. We came up with perhaps a draft to amend the program, to kind of add a new category, extended this a little bit. Obviously, from the information you're just giving tonight, you know, we need to come up with some proactive programs and send a clear message that we welcome business investment. We will welcome all types of investment to help move the city forward. So in reality, we've made just a couple of very minor changes to this for your consideration. And again, tonight, this is for your input and our ability to kind of get your thoughts on it. And we would, you know, if you think you want to take action, bring it back at a later time. Essentially, one of the things we looked at is we have many underutilized sites in the community, places where you had buildings before, no longer there because they weren't able to be reused, or you had other issues that required a site demolition. So we'd add that category. So it's not just vacant buildings, it also allows new building on an underutilized site to be eligible for this sales tax rebate program. Eighteen months is the period now from when the business opens for which they can get the credit. It's a very short time period. I think the council needs to consider lengthening it. I'm suggesting 36 months. You could potentially take it farther if you want. Those are basically the two fundamental changes to this that we're looking at. You kind of have a template here that you can make other changes to if you wanted to. For example, if you had a certain area that you really wanted to target. If you said, I want to target Broadway or Atwater Boulevard, you can look at manipulating this to add more time, a bigger increase, whatever you like to do. We kind of have something that's here that we can work with, but I think we need to look at making a little bit more enhanced going into the future to try to stimulate some more activity. And so tonight, again, this is here for input discussion and hopefully, with your consent, we package it and bring it back for action at a later time. So mayor, I'm here to answer questions that you might have and get it from you as well as the public, if they've got any, you know, thoughts on this tonight.
You know, the one thing that I commend, Councilmember Raymond is the driving force behind this particular program and, you know, when it was adopted, I think that we all agreed that there was probably going to need to be some flex into this. My question would be, do you have any data to tell us how successful the program has or has not been so far?
I was going to ask Laquinder. She just walked up, Mr. Zanoni, but I believe we've had one business apply for the rebate and that's all that I'm aware of so far.
Any questions or comments from the council on this? Mr. Raymond, would you have any comments on, this is your baby here, so.
Yeah, actually, I was meeting with Mr. McBride and he came up with this idea to expand it because of the financial situation to try to encourage businesses so we can try to grow our way out. And I just thought he did a tremendous job with this.
Yeah. Yeah. Mr. Vineyard?
Yeah, I do have at least one concern man, maybe one suggestion. Under the applicant process, it talks about the manager showing sure the finance department includes program and details, et cetera, et cetera. To me, I'm not sure really that needs to be in there because that can be done verbally by the city council, but I do believe we do need some type of packet that is both at the planning department and the finance department, they're identical, where it has the information for this in it. And then the applicant can determine whether they're actually going to utilize it or can utilize it or want to utilize it. Because I've heard businesses that have turned it down and I've heard businesses haven't got the information. So if we can have it in a packet that you hand to them, no matter which department they go to, I think it would be better than actually having the city manager in ordinance saying he needs to do this because he's already aware of it, or she, if we are here, someone else.
Okay. Mr. Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I agree with Mr. Raymond about building your way out of it. I think that Atwater's done a pretty good job building because we have more businesses coming into Atwater than most other cities in our county. My concern is, is the, you're talking about on places where they build? Okay, and that was one of the things that the councils in the past fought for. Walmart came in areas and they demanded that they were going to build and not pay taxes or give the city's portion of the tax for years. And some, a lot of cities buckled down. Now, that didn't happen with our Walmart. What I'm afraid of is, is that going to be on it too, the Atwater sewer plant? Because that's going to, very valuable piece of property. And to let some large corporation come in and then not pay their taxes to the city of Atwater, it's not going to benefit us on the short term, so.
Right, so we tried to pay attention to kind of describing what underutilized site is. And so we've kind of included it where it's a location that had some sort of, some sort of site improvements that previously accommodated a business. So in that case, you never had a business before, it wouldn't be eligible. But we're really looking at our locations where you had a building and you had a demolition because the building didn't meet code anymore. A good example would be at Five Corners. You had a building that was burnt, it's been demolished, the site's not been used since then. There's probably other ones around town, but that one comes to mind. Another one that we ran into is on Atwater Boulevard. Used car lot was approved by the CDRC, the commission, and they had a very small dilapidated building. Now, that building has been removed. So technically, there's no building for them to qualify for the current program, but if you were to adopt this, it'd allow them to go forward. That's basically stalled at this point. They've got some financial considerations, it might be enough to kind of push that forward. So we're talking about that. We're not talking about undeveloped sites or places that didn't have a business before. We have to have some reasonable connection and it has to have accommodated them previously. And that's kind of the way this is written.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear that, because there was a building there along with the sewer plant, so.
But it wasn't open for business.
It wasn't for business, right. Except for city business.
I think it's noteworthy also, you know, people are curious, you know, what are we going to be able to do or how are we going to do anything with like the Mia Pueblo building, the old shopping center? And the Kmart building also comes to mind, you know, places like that. And I think people need to realize that, well, in the case of the Mia Pueblo supermarket building, that there's extensive electrical improvements or repair needs to be done within that particular building. And we are getting a certain amount of pushback from the property owners and what have you as far as making that a marketable facility. So those are kind of things, you know, that we're running up against to try and get somebody into those right there in addition to, you know, other things.
Right. I can tell you that we've provided information on the program to the listing brokers. They're not unaware of it. They do have it, they are aware of it. In addition to that, we publicize the program many times in the Sunstar, both in a classified and a takeout ad, and we paid for that at our own expense to kind of promote it. It's on the city website. It's one of the what's new or news items that's always been there. But it takes time for these things to kick in. It takes some traction and those alone might not help those buildings because every tenant's going to have a different requirement and they've got to figure out what they can afford or can't afford. But that, in cooperation with perhaps the landlords being cooperative, might be enough to kind of facilitate reuse. Our program alone may not be all of it, but it might be one piece to kind of help promote, to move it forward.
Well, I had some hesitation, some reservations, if you will, for the duration of the time for this, but obviously, you know, with only one business applying for the benefits of this program, you know, what have we got to lose? I've heard that one used here lately. To, you know, extend this to a 36-month timeframe would not be out of a question. Is there any other items within here that anybody else would like to see as a modification? Do you have any other suggestions, Scott?
Mayor, I think for now, we just wanted to kind of reiterate that where we currently are with the current program and some changes and I think I'll be happy to get this prepared where it can come back for an actionable item at a future meeting.
Okay. Okay. All right, very good. Well, then I think that's probably where we'll leave it and again, we'll bring it back, I don't know, within 60 days anyway, and see where we're at and hopefully, we can have some more input and suggestions possibly from the public as well as to what might be a doable solution here to getting these underutilized buildings on the tax rolls here down the road. Okay? Nothing else?
City council matters. City council comments.
Mr. Vineyard, why don't you start us off?
Let me get my bucket list out here.
Oh, Lord, here you go.
That's what you get. Well, you've already addressed the finance workshop, which I was going to kind of suggest as well. I'd also like to suggest a joint workshop between the city council, CDRC, and Measure H sometime in February so that with the new council and any new members that may become on those committees, we can all sit down and figure out our expectations and what our authorities are and what, if we want to make any changes to anything. I think that would be a good time to do that. And I'd also like, in say, either the, say, the first week of February, also like a report on the ordinance updates from the code enforcement. I understand he's working on several. Christmas parade, December 2nd, 7:00 PM downtown Atwater, come out. Come out, have some fun, stay safe, dress warm. City offices obviously are closed Thanksgiving from November 23rd through 27th. Foggy days, we're getting them, and they're probably going to become more and more prevalent. So, people need to slow down, take your time, leave earlier for work if you need to, leave earlier for wherever you're going. The streets are just getting, and the highways are just getting notorious for wrecks, people injured. So, please, just take your time, slow down, turn your lights on. It's always a good one, so people know you're coming. And other than that, I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Raymond?
I'd just like to extend my thoughts and prayers out to the Stanislaus County Sheriff's Department, and the slain officer's family, and pray justice be swift for the suspect, and, you know, God bless them. I also would like to, you know, thank all the candidates that ran. Congratulations to the winners. It's extremely difficult putting yourself out there, so, you know, I commend you all. And here we go.
Yep. Mr. Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to begin by saying congratulations to the new council members, Cindy Viera and Paul Craden. You guys put yourselves out there, like you said, and you guys did it, you earned it, so congratulations for that. After Christmas, it's all probably going to be hitting the road with it, so be ready. And I just want to thank everyone in the county, the school boards, everybody else who ran too, because it's not an easy thing to do. And so, I want to congratulate all the winners out there, and all the people that didn't win, but you put yourselves out. Hey, good job. Thank you for your time that you wanted to give the community. So, thank you all.
Mr. Bergman?
I'd just also like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving season, and I would like to put my prayers and thoughts out to our Detective Dave Brum's family, who suffered a loss. I believe his father-in-law passed away last week, I believe, and I just wanted to put out my thoughts and prayers to him.
Several items here, one of which is, if you go to your computer or to your iPhone, we have a new website, and today is day one. You may have to refresh possibly to get to it, but if you take a look at it, it's there. It came up later in the day today, so stuff that would normally be there wasn't, but it'll have that stuff, and it'll, you know, be improved as we go along. But it's a really good-looking website, very customer-friendly, you can navigate through it fairly easy. And it's got a lot of good pictures of our city, and really showcases the city, so that somebody that may be interested in, you know, some area around here is going to get a good look at, you know, probably the shining jewel of the valley right here. So, I commend Marvin and his staff for putting together a really good-looking website. If you notice, on your way out tonight, there is a small plastic bottle that is sitting where the agendas are at. And thank you, Chris. I appreciate you holding that up as a visual for all. This is a donation container for the COPS and Fire for Kids program here, to purchase toys for underprivileged children here within our city. So, on your way out, drop that $20 bill in as you go out the door, if you would, please, and help us to make the Christmas season one of great memory for a needy child. We had a meeting this week or so ago with the plans for Fruitland, and what is going to need to be done in order to restore that one street with the cost estimates and everything, and the engineers that were there. I thanked the residents and other folks that came and were able to take a look at that and hear the reports on that. So, we have, as you probably know, the Measure V has passed here in the county. So, we'll be having some revenue coming in that'll go towards the repair, replacement as need be of streets within our city. So, we're probably going to be looking at that low-hanging fruit as funds start to come in, so that we can start doing repairs where we can get to them and make a difference. As the rain comes and everything, it's going to make streets just that much worse if we don't address it. So, that money will be coming in here over the next 30 years. We also, well, in any case, I wanted to just say also, come out to the Christmas parade, as Mr. Vineyard had noted. This is a really great family event, lots of fun. It's a great deal. So, come on out and enjoy yourselves out there. And I, too, finally, want to make it also, my prayers are with the family and with the Stan County Sheriff's Department for the loss of Deputy Mike Wallace. This was a really tragic event, senseless murder, and made national news. That's, you know, it's sad that that has to happen, but I want to adjourn the meeting this evening in the memory of Deputy Mike Wallace and his family, and to all those officers that are out patrolling our streets here this evening. Stay safe, guys. We think about you all the time, and, you know, we don't want to have these kind of tragedies continue if we can help it. So, with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, folks. Thank you at home for watching.